Okay, well, welcome. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, September 29th, and I want to call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. So the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will stand, please rise and join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item on the agenda, 2.01, is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose any changes.
I'm moved to adopt the agenda presented.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All of those in favor say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. And during this time when we are conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we are accepting public comment through a portal on our district website or through email. Any comments received prior to the board meeting will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments that come in through the chat feature during the board meeting will be reviewed and addressed after the meeting. We received two public comments prior to tonight's meeting. The first is from Gabe Raider. His comment just read, "Teachers and Classroom Time." And although he indicated that he didn't wish for follow-up or any follow-up contact, I want to ask Dr. Quinn to reach out to him to see if part of his comment was inadvertently amended. The second comment is from Laura Boynton. Ms. Boynton wrote about the new equity and inclusion coordinator the district is planning to hire. Her comment was, "I don't object to the position. I wonder why the decision was made to hire internally. To point out the obvious, we are already an incredibly white district that represents one small slice of society. This seems like the time to bring in someone who can see our district with fresh eyes. Ideally, we should be striving to bring in more people of color." And she requested to be contacted, so Dr. Quinn, if you could reach out to her if you haven't already, we'd appreciate that.
So, Mr. McLaren, I did email both Gabe and, even though Gabe said he didn't choose to be contacted, and Laura. And I did get a reply from Laura. And I, with Gabe, I just asked him if he, just like you said, accidentally left off some of his comment. And then, and I just, like I said, provided Laura with some of the rationale for why we've started with an internal posting. A lot of which, we have some quality, I think, but also we're thinking about dollars and cents. And where, when you see our enrollment, you'll know that we are, I hate to say this, but, you know, because it's, we're never overstaffed, but based on the, based on our finances and the funding, we, if we can absorb that position, it would be financially good. But if we don't, but it's important to get the right person. So if we don't find the right person, we'll open it.
You mean by absorbing financially, somebody internally be hiring?
Yeah, if we, if we have a certificated person in the, in the district who applies and we believe we can do it and we can not replace them, you know, or move things around, that would save a position. And you'll see when we get to the enrollment that that's, you know, we're, we're trying to do that where we can.
So that's- Rather than hiring from outside and having to have potentially one more person later that is have to let go.
Right, exactly. But it, like, it's still very important to get the right person. So we're going to start internally.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd like to remind the audience that Dr. Quinn writes answers to questions received from the community during the month and posts those under the public comment item on the board doc's agenda and also on the website. If you don't see your question answered this month, check again next month or otherwise resubmit your question. All right, the next item on the agenda is 5.01, Report on Capital Projects Bond. It's a standing topic at all our school board business meetings. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Dibok to tell us how things are proceeding with our bond projects.
They're proceeding quite well, actually. So I'll start out with a little bit of an update on the Safety and Security best-of-bill project. We actually did a walkthrough today with the contractor and went through punch list items. So the, the video systems and the electronic access, the cameras and the door locks are all supposed to be functional by the end of this week, which is a big, big milestone. And most of the actual construction is, is completely finished. So right now, it's just a matter of little touch up here and there. So little trim pieces or some revising of caulking, missing screws, you know, kind of the little incidental items that just need to be finished up before we sign off on the, on the project being complete. So that's actually coming on quite nicely. Then the, the big one, the, the high school project, we're still kind of wrapping up design development. So the last couple of weeks, the big project, about three weeks, I guess now, the big project has been all of the consultants. So the electrical engineers, the mechanical engineers, the geo engineers, the architects, the cornerstone, the district, the bond oversight committee. Everybody has gone through the plans in, in great detail and brought up any question or concern that has, that anybody has, has got on their mind. And they're all basically put into a big list. So now cornerstone, our general, our GCCM, and Dykman Architects are going through the thousand items. So a thousand questions, a thousand items have come out of this review. And they're going through line by line, every single one of them, and writing responses. So either investigating, should, is this a change that needs to be made? Or is it something that there's a reason why we didn't do that or can't do that? And, and basically coming up with cost impacts and reasons to make a change or not to make a change. And then also finishing up using that as kind of a vehicle for budget reconciliation as well. And the budget has actually come really, really tight between the, the design estimate and the actual design documents where they're at right now, which is a really good sign. Considering we have a tight budget, it's really good that they're in very close alignment at this point. And kind of the latest development, so today, there was a bid opening for the ground improvement because of the conditions on site. And the amount of money that we've got invested going into the site improvements into the ground, it was determined we needed to get those folks on board early. It's one of the earliest pieces of work that's at the bid. We had, I think, four bidders submit and the bid numbers came in really right exactly where the budget numbers said they should have been. So that'll get vetted out here in the next couple of days and, and hopefully we'll get those folks on board and brought onto the team. So if there are any other questions or if I've left anything out that you're wondering about, please let me know.
What's the time for? I mean, how long does it take to go through a thousand questions and respond?
A while. So they are, they've been working on that since, well, since the question started coming in. In fact, the bond oversight committee had submitted a list and Tim Jewett, Dykman, and Sam Kormer from Cornerstone actually joined them at their, at their meeting last Tuesday and went through some of their specific items in order to get those addressed. But we're anticipating the next couple of weeks, we should have a fairly complete list from them. So probably about a month all in all. That we expect going through that.
Not so long as to cause a delay?
No.
No, this is the scheduled part of-
This is, okay, just curious.
This is a normal part of the process. And from what they told me, a thousand is not out of the ordinary.
Okay, good.
As far as, as items being questioned.
Great, thank you.
And I know others in the community have been asking, when do we start seeing breaking ground and such? What's that scheduled for?
That will probably, next summer. So bid, we're anticipating going out to bid after, shortly after first of the year.
And all of that is, we're on schedule and we're not behind?
Yeah, no, we're not behind at all.
Yeah, I think it's, it's something to remember that building a school is a lot different than a shed in your backyard or something. It's not a, I thought of it this weekend and I do it next month.
Yeah, there's, it's, there's a lot of, of planning. It's like, it's like painting, right? If you're going to do it right, you spend more time on the preparation than you do the actual painting itself. So there's a lot of prep work that goes into getting ready to, to take on this kind of a project.
But we're down to, we're down to fine details now. You know, like, we have enough, do we have water filling stations in the right places? And what will the traffic flow be if we put one here? I mean, it's, there is a lot of thought that's going into every detail. And by having a lot of eyes on it, I think, you know, we'll have a better product. And one that meets our budget, so.
Anyone else? All right, well, thanks, Mark. And you can find more information about the bond and the work of the bond oversight committee on the district website. In addition, Dr. Quinn publishes a weekly bond update every Friday, and you can sign up to have them sent directly to your email. So next is the, is item 5.02, which deals with the information campaign for the replacement levy that we will, we will be putting before the voters on November 3rd. So I'm going to ask Dr. Quinn to give us an update.
Okay, well, we've been busy on getting the last pieces of the information campaign in, in place this week. I think I told you that Jay Julius and Torena the Setting Sun Productions are making some informational videos, short videos, that should be done by the end of this week. You know, they're one minute and two and three minute videos. They've interviewed people in the community. Just talking about the school district and what the school means to them. But today, over the weekend, I put out a call to see if there were, because Jace told me it would be great if there were some kids who wanted to just be interviewed. And so I put out a call on Sunday. And today, he interviewed, I think, 11 or 12 kids just responded and wanted to do it. So they were down on the football field, very socially distanced, but they, they were interviewed today. So I don't know how much is going to be. Mark and I both have some footage to review that we haven't quite gotten around to. But interview with Candace Wilson and Jake Locker and Aaron Gunter and just people in the community. So that aspect is moving forward. The one, you know, we, we put out one mailer. That mailer is at the print shop being printed. And we plan to mail that in about a, about 10 or 12 days. So that, that piece will come out. You've probably also seen that we've been putting a few informational posts on web, on the district website, and some of those are getting shared. And not to be confused, there's also the community, the citizens committee is putting out some that are a bit more promotional. And then the part that you are all involved in is the hosting some informational Zoom meetings. And so Leanne is going to be our first out with that. And she and I have been in communication today. There's going to be five of those. I, I think I can share my screen, I will in a minute, and so that I can put up the schedule if people want to see when those are going to be. Leanne's is tomorrow, too. Let's see, I think it's Kevin is Monday and, and Melinda's next week. And then Jesse and Andrew will be the week after that. Where we, we've got a plan for tomorrow. If you might want to tune into Facebook and see how we do and see how you can, if you want to do some changes. But we've got, we're going to have a variety of people on the screen. We're, some people that you invite, but also a few district people. I'll be on all of them. Kelly Warner's going to be on all of them and help us with the technology end of it. The kids were, who were so excited to be part of this, I had Eric was working with them today, Tripp. And so two of them signed up to be on each of your Zooms. Abneet Kong, if you are interested in being on one of those, just let-
And what time is tomorrow? I'm wanting to put it on a- Linda, what time is tomorrow?
I think she's frozen, I believe it's at six.
Kelly, is that six o'clock?
I believe so. Is that correct? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just making an alarm for myself.
Melinda, you're muted.
I'll bring Linda my computer.
Linda's going to move into the conference room.
All right, well, while everyone's getting unfrozen, thank you for that update, Linda, while you were with us. The November 3rd election is five weeks from today. And the ballots are scheduled to be mailed out two weeks from today. I want to encourage everyone to vote in this really important election. So we'll move on to item 5.03, which is a report and discussion of the first quarter of the 2021 school year. The last time the board met, the reopening task force had recently completed its fan, its plan. And we were just getting ready for back to school in the Ferndale School District. Today marks the 19th day of the new school year. Dr. Quinn has continued to send us weekly written updates about how things are going. But we look forward to hearing our report tonight on what has happened during the first month of school and also what we might look forward to during the next month or so. The board welcomes the opportunity to talk about the plans for bringing kids back into some level of in-person learning when it's safe to do so. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Linda to bring us up to date and start the discussion about next steps.
Yes, AKA Kelly Larrabee, since I just got shut out lately. So I had a PowerPoint to show. And I, I will just say to anybody who's listening, watch for the advertisements about the other Zoom meetings on Facebook. And I'll, we'll get those on the website as well. So Kelly Warner has the PowerPoint and Kelly Larrabee is working with her to see if we can get that put up. But while they're doing that, I'm just, I just want to say that we, we, I have continued to meet with superintendents in the region on a weekly basis, I mean, weekly basis and the, the, in the state on a, on a bi-weekly basis. And so I would say that we're all struggling with pretty much the same questions, like, when will we know it's safe to start bringing kids back? Maybe go push the buttons with her. So Kelly, will you advance the slide? Okay, so the, the health department, we're using health department metrics that came in, that have been endorsed by the governor. And this is from the Decision Tree for Provision of In-Person Learning. And the big question, I just boiled it down for a slide. There, it's, all of this is on our website. But high risk is considered more than 75 cases per 100,000 a population of 100,000 people over 14 days. We don't have 100,000 people, so, but, so this is all, the numbers are all calibrated as if we did. So 75 cases, 100,000 people, 14 days, that's considered high risk. And we should not be considering bringing back people in person. Moderate risk would be between 25 and 75 cases over a 14-day period. Low risk below 25 for 100,000. You've seen this before, but I just want to frame it from that. Then if we go to the next slide, we, you know, that means that we, and we have been in that 25 to 75 range for, since August. But if you'll remember, on August 4th, we, we met. And I told you that the day before, we, or a day or two before, the superintendents in Watcom County had all met with Dr. Stern from, who's the Chief Medical Officer at Watcom County Health Department. And he told us that his strong recommendation was that we open schools fully distance learning because we were at that time at about, in the mid 60s and headed in the wrong direction. And he said, "It's August 4th, we're headed in the wrong direction. You cannot make, you cannot make these decisions the minute before school starts." So all of our Watcom County school districts started with distance learning. Now, if you go to the next slide, so I, I'll talk about, I want to just take a break here and talk for a minute about the first 19 days of school, because today was the 19th day. The exec, executive team all took a deep breath when I said yesterday that it was the 18th day of school, which meant 10% of our 180-day school year, which, but, so I just put some numbers up here. So remember, we had over 80 people who were part of a task force who planned and who planned for this distance opening, but also planned for, what do we do when it's safe to start bringing kids back? Since, during these first 19 days, we've distributed over 3,000 computers. We've served 3,293 meals. And we'll, we'll be serving again tomorrow. We've been serving since the first day of school about 75 students a day in our Safe Remote Access sites. They're still distance learning, but they're coming to us because they can't access their online learning, either because of connectivity problems or, most recently, we've brought in kids who couldn't access because of language barriers. I mentioned in my letter to you last night that we have hired eight new employees this year. And that compares to over 100 that we hired last year. And then the other number, I just, you know, this, that last number does include bus drivers. So they weren't all levy-related. But I checked with John today and we have 147 fewer staff members on our payroll this September than we had last September. That's almost a one-fourth fewer employees. So what the, the enrollment, which I mentioned earlier, is, well, it, all, all school districts enrollment seemed to be down. I would say that we're on the higher end in percentage-wise of, of the decline in enrollment. I guess it would have been good for me to have put a comparison up here, but I did, I guess you could do the math yourself. We, we, on September 23rd, we had 4,129 FTE students. You know the difference, the head count, not all of our students are full-time. So we get, we, we, the number we turn into the state is the full-time equivalency. And that's down 300, almost 304 students from what we projected as a budget number. Which is significant. That's, that's almost 7%, about six, it's over 6%, between 6 and 7%. That, what that means, and you can see the numbers there, the great majority, and this is, seems to be the trend in all school districts, the great majority of the decline is at the elementary level. Middle school's down a little, and actually, our high school is up a bit. So the, the decrease in revenue of, in state apportionment is just under $3 million for that decline in enrollment. So that's why I was mentioning earlier that if we could, if we have a position that we can hire, if we can hire it from within, we'd probably, we should probably look and see if we can do that. So the next slide. So I said I meet with superintendents across the state, I mean, across the region and the county every week. And all of us have been planning for when we could move to stage three. This is from our website, that stage three is when we can, we're still going to be in distance learning, but we can start bringing in in-person learning for students with greatest needs. And then gradually, in that purple zone of the dial, get to more hybrid learning. We were feeling encouraged earlier this month. The, the numbers were headed in the right direction. In fact, on August 31st, Dr. Stern from the Watcom County Health Department sent a letter to the seven Watcom County superintendents saying, "I think we're headed in the right direction and you should activate your planning muscles and get ready because if we keep, if the community infection rate keeps going down, we should be able to start bringing some students back in October." Or actually, some of my colleagues were planning on the end of September. If you go to the next slide, it, it has to do with our plan for in, in-person learning, that this really comes right out of the, right out of the task force during the summer, just looking at more of a sequencing. But so I just, when I, if, on implementing our plan is dependent, of course, on the community spread of the virus. And we will establish the first day of bringing back, of starting this plan after we've experienced two consecutive weeks of a significant decline in infection rates. And we, we just said a significant, significant will be defined as about a decline of about 10 points. You know, if it's nine or, but we just said it can't just go down one point. You know, there, we have to see the trending down. So what that means is, and the next slide, I think, will show you the way, don't go there quite yet, though. Yeah. The, the, one of the slides coming down will show you that we have come down from the 21st to the 28th. But before that, we were going back up and we were right back up to where we were in August when Dr. Stern told us to plan for remote learning. Even though we were still between the 25 and 75, it's that trend line. And why two weeks? Because it's impossible to turn around a complete system. First of all, we want to be sure that we're headed in the right direction. And second, we need time for everyone to plan. Our teachers, our bus drivers, our bus routes, remember, we laid up our bus drivers. We need to call them back, we need to, you know, there's a whole lot of planning that takes place. So to get back to what I was saying, if, if, on the 21st, we were quite high. The 28th, yesterday, we had come down more than 10 points. If we were to see next Monday, on the 5th, that we were down another 10 points, we would start planning to, to, for the first date of this sequence to be two weeks after that. So October 19th, where we would, yes, Melinda?
Well, you were saying earlier that this is dependent on the community spread of virus in Watcom County. So I'm looking on the Watcom County Health Department site that has it split up all, with all the different school districts. We've come down, but like NOCSAC is going up.
Right, no, we have, we have, no. And, and Dr. Stern has talked with us, I don't know why they put that out that way, but they do. But Dr. Stern says, "We really look, have to look at the community, at the county, because our teachers live in one county and work in another and we shop in another." So, and, and those rates, because of the, they're all calculated in 100,000. In Mount Baker, you know, a couple people get, and it shoots the rate way up. Whereas in Bellingham, they have such a bigger population base that, so really can, the only fair way to look at it is by county. Even though it's reported that way. So anyway, the rest of this slide just says that, you know, while we're still operating right now in full distance learning mode across the district, we've had some students on campus during the first day of school. And we've been able- and we've been able to manage that in our safe remote sites. And, um, it's actually something that we're proud of because we have not denied students one day of education. Um, it, because of connectivity and those of us who live in the county, I don't think Bellingham has a lot of places without internet access. We've tried to get internet access into homes if we could, but anyway, so those next three bullets are just about kids who have been, they're still in distance learning, but they're accessing their distance learning through us. Now the next slide. So if we, if we get this two weeks of declining COVID, then the second Monday after two weeks of declining COVID numbers in Watcom County, we would first bring back students in developmental preschool, life skills and self-contained behavior classrooms. Um, and they would be brought to their home schools for some level of in-person learning. We're still working on the details, whether that would be two days or four days or half days. But, um, that's the first wave. And if, and then the next week, we would bring back students in K1 in a hybrid model, then the next week, students in 2, 3, and the next week. This is our proposal, we want to discuss it with you tonight. The next week, students in 4, 5. But where we are right now, the first date, the soonest that first date could be would be October 19th. So it'd be October 19th, October 26th, November, whatever, 2nd, November 9th. Um, moving towards some in-person learning. The next slide, I think the next slide is what we've had, I, I will just say while that's coming up, we've had some discussion about, um, secondary. Uh, it, secondary is really hard, you cannot cohort in secondary. We, you just cannot do it. You, you, kids change classes and you cohorted first period and it's not cohort second period. And our secondary kids, a lot, a lot of them are doing better with the remote learning. You know, if you're five years old and you don't know your alphabet, it's pretty hard to log on and do your. So we are, we have been talking about what we could do at the secondary level during second quarter, which may, might be bring in groups of kids for some kind of orientation to the beginning of second quarter. Maybe start looking at our data and identifying kids who are not doing well and bringing them in for, during the, during the asynchronous part of the day for some, some in-person kind of support. But we haven't quite got that far. But I just, this next slide, I made it a cut over the weekend and I said the trend line is moving in the wrong direction. Well, seven, on September 28th, it started to move in our favor. But you can see, you know, July and August and it, it was, these are, are, um, off the health department's, um, health department's website. And so in August, when, when we told you that we're going in the wrong direction, we were at 63.9 and it, and had been heading up for several weeks. And then as soon as we made that decision, it started coming down. And now I suppose this is the after Labor Day, but the 21st did not, the numbers didn't look very good again. So this week, we're back down a bit, but, um, anyway, if you go to the next slide, I'll just, it's just a reminder. So it's over 75, not good. Under 25, okay to get back to in-person. Between 25 and 75, have a plan, proceed cautiously. Um, don't move too fast in case the trend's going the wrong direction. Um, and so that, the next, I think that's the end of it is, or is there just, I, we're, we're just interested in, in your comments about where we're headed with this. And, um, we just want to be ready when we can bring kids back. So with that, I'll entertain questions, comments, discussion.
Linda, looking at the, the numbers, you know, that you've got on that one track in the metric slide, it's been, you know, up and down and there's really no true trend line. What you mentioned, if it drops down by 10 points for a couple of weeks in a row, what do we have a, a plan or a thought for what we would do? If all of a sudden, okay, it's been going down, we plan on bringing students back and then it shoots back up or it shoots back up in the midst of that process?
Well, this is what we talk about all the time. We have been, the whole time, we've been in the zone where we could have kids back in it, in some way. We, we've never got, well, if you look at just Ferndale or just some other place, but the county has always been between that 25 and 75. I guess what we want to make sure is we're not going to go above that 75 and, and have to reverse course. So we're, but I just, it, it's a, um, trying to weigh the options because we know how hard this is for so many of our families. And we want to bring kids back when it's safe. But we're, and that's why we're trying to go slow and have a plan. We also need to give warning to our staff, we need to give warning to families that we're thinking about this. Melinda, you had a question?
It was on the same line as Kevin's. It's like the, the four-week or five-week progression of, you know, the numbers go down by 10 points. Every progression seems to assume, which is a really big assumption, that we keep on that trajectory of we're staying low. And I just feel like, yeah, I want kids to come back. We all want kids to come back. What I don't want are kids to be yo-yoed and families and teachers to yo-yo back and forth. Because I think that emotional strain and cost and expect that, that would be.
Yeah.
It's just, it, it, those numbers can just move so fluidly, so quickly. It's not gonna, it's not gonna behave for us for five weeks, especially if the numbers are that volatile with having the whole county, almost the whole county doing distance learning.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I, I will, you know, we'll take our direction from you, but I will say these are exactly the conversations happening in every school district in the Northwest region right now. Um, I think the only, unless there was one of the island schools, but I think the only public school that opened in a hybrid model was Oak Harbor. They've been doing fine there. They, they opened in a, a hybrid model, K5. Um, we've all been watching, uh, but I think, um, in our, I, I just read in the paper that Lyndon was planning to start yesterday and they delayed it. Is that, Kevin, is that true? Yeah. Um, Mount Baker is bringing back some, some, I think, or did they delay it too, Mark? You know? Yeah. So we're all, we're all sitting here trying to figure out what.
Has, has Oak Harbor, you said Oak Harbor opened from the beginning with a hybrid model?
Yeah.
And I wish them well, obviously, we all want everybody to be happy and successful with this. Have they had any cases and how did they handle that? Has anything?
No, I don't think so. Um, no, I don't, I think they, you know, we haven't had any, well, I don't know if that's true to say, John, if we had, we have, we've had contract tracing. You know, we've had people go get tested, but I don't think we've had cases, have we, John?
We, we have, um, we've been being very careful with a limited number of students. And so, um, the, when we have had cases, we haven't had other contacts associated because of our,
Yeah, okay.
our space and, and PPE and, and other factors. Um, so we, we've been able to very much control it because of our numbers have been low. With bigger numbers, it gets, it gets really complicated really quickly. We haven't had to deal with that yet.
Well, looking at the report that comes out every few days, it doesn't seem like Watcom County is headed in the right direction. So I'll be surprised if we make it till the 19th. But of those kids, looking at the population, our student enrollment, of the kids that, that are not here, do we have a sense for whether we would gain any of those kids back once schools were open? Or are they really off on other plans and we're not likely to recoup them? Do we know?
Well, I taught, I, I can only give you anecdotal information.
Okay.
We had a big plan, um, we had a big plan, we were going to rate to all of the, the people who said they were homeschooling. And then we found out you're not, you are not allowed legally to do that. Um, but I talked to a mother at the desk today, I talked to a parent yesterday who, and a lot of them have said, I'm just gonna pull my kid out until we're back to some in-person learning and do it at home. Uh, but, but Andrew, I don't have anecdote, I only have anecdotal.
Yeah, yeah.
I, what I do know is how, how frustrated a lot of parents are. And, and my view is probably skewed because usually they call me when they're frustrated. You know, I don't, I don't talk to parents who are thrilled. Um, and so, and I, and I just, I'm just not convinced that it's, well, none of us are convinced this is the best way to do education, but we're, we're prioritizing needs now. So, um, I, you know, we will continue to work on a plan for bringing kids back because when it does happen, we need, you know, there's a, those of you who served on the reopening task force know, we spent 10 weeks talking about details and we only scratched the surface. I mean, I think, Melinda, you asked, what are we going to do about recess or what are we gonna? Well, those are all the things that we're starting to, um, dig into now so that we do have a plan when the time comes. But I guess I'm interested to know if you're thinking that, um, about the, this whole idea of waiting for a couple of weeks of a declining number.
And were our transfers this year any different than a typical year? We, did we see very many transfers to private schools and things like that, or was it pretty stable?
Parent partnership programs, um, yes, we did more. Yes, considerably more.
Well, it seems to me that, um, waiting for that two-week downturn absolutely has to happen. I think I'm a little concerned that you're talking about one week and then another group the next week and another group the next week. To me, that seems fast.
Too fast?
It does, it does feel too fast.
Okay.
Um, because we know it takes a few weeks to find out if we really aren't going back up yet, you know? And so like Melinda said, jerking folks around, she didn't say it quite that well, um, is not helpful. And so a smooth transition makes more sense. And I just, I worry about if it's one week, one week, one week, for the staff's sake, for the bus driver's sake, everybody, that just feels like it's fast. But that's only my opinion from out here, you guys are in the midst of it and know better.
It might also be a way that we could tell if, if the numbers are coming up, is that because of school stuff as opposed to just general community? I mean, the numbers could go up in the general community and have nothing to do with the schools. But if we proceed too fast and the numbers go up, do we know where that source is?
Well, and I think, Melinda, you kind of bring up a good point in the sense of where are those numbers coming from? I mean, the news was being somewhat vague this morning that I heard that they're saying there's been an uptick, but it's related to a concentrated gathering at some long-term or long care facility, you know? And so those are the types of things that a group of people getting together or having a party or something, one small event of a large number of people can really skew those numbers.
Well, it skews it, but it also provides more ways for it to spread. So I mean, the, I, I know they're doing contract tracing, but yeah, when, when.
Yeah, and it's the difference of if it's a party where, you know, 200 people came and they can go and with, in the community and mingle more. Or is it a long-term care facility where those people are there and don't mingle too much in the community? I mean, our school members, if we were to be a source of spread, our people definitely will be mingling, at least with their own families and such.
So I'm part of the conversation around, um, Open Public Meetings Act and what we've been allowed to do this is, so this expires, the current.
Tomorrow, doesn't it?
Yes, thank you. Um, and so the conversation is happening, um, is that if we are asking as boards, if we are asking or okaying people to come back and be in person on campus, we as a board have to do the same darn thing. And so then the conversation is, well, do we just do it as a board? And we still don't have the public in the room with us. Um, and we continue to broadcast. So it's all tied together and that should be coming out within the next few days.
It doesn't seem like they're going to extend it again, you think? Or you don't know?
I don't know. I think if schools are opening, they, they won't extend it. Now, will they do it county by county? Because SoCalip's opening up, right? I've been watching the news and they've been talking about how they're going to do it. And I know there's a few others and, and so will they make that decision county by county? Because if our county doesn't open up, then do we still operate under this? I'm not sure.
But I think our county is up, gonna be opening, well, I don't, I, I think there are some of the other districts in our county that are more ambitious about their opening plan than we are. Um, so does it mean anybody in the county or?
Do you have any sense how Lyndon Christensen, they did open in person?
Full-time. Um, well, they haven't closed. I don't, I don't know any specifics other than that.
Yeah, I, I, I know that from one of the articles that I read, they were, you know, they're fortunate enough that they have the space where they can have kids socially distant as well as wearing masks. And I think they're following those guidelines, but they were able to spread out because they have a large facility, which we just don't have. But you're right, I haven't heard any, any problems for them, which is great. So, um, I guess we'll be talking more about this as we move forward. Certainly there will have to be some discussions about how we want to do board, board meetings in public and what kind of, um, guidelines we'll have for that. And then, um, we'll keep you posted on that. And then Lynn, if you can, um, just keep us posted. And so this is information that you're sharing with families in your letters to families, correct?
I, uh,
To some extent?
I just shared that, um, not, not quite this deep of the sequencing kind of plan, which I probably won't after this conversation. Um, but I've just shared with, um, with families and with, first with staff and then with families that we are starting to plan for reopening when it's safe to do so. Um, yes, and I will continue.
Andrew, you're muted.
I think you're.
Yeah, my computer was telling me that. I know this is still a lot of work. Um, so was I muted during my last comment too? I don't know. No. Um, I know that the district continues to work really hard on these plans and it's a moving target. So thank you all on the admin team for, for all you're doing and to the teachers as well. Just that it's, I know it's not easy, I know it's really hard and everyone's working really, really hard. And I think by and large, our community is recognizing and very appreciative of what we're doing and how hard the teachers are working, even though they're frustrated with, you know, the, um, uh, pandemic and everything. It's, it's not frustration with us and, and the plans that have been made and the way we're approaching it. So again, thank you to, to everyone who's working on that.
And thank you for the communication out to the public. I mean, the, the. And thank you for the communication out to the public. I mean, the, the letter you wrote to the parents, Linda, was good. And I particularly liked the way you bulleted sections in it, you know, so it was easier to take bite-sized pieces because there was, as you said, a lot of information there.
And kind of, I don't know how exactly to ask the question, but calling and Evne with students, what are your thoughts as far as coming back to school? Have you, or what are you feeling from your friends, your classmates? What sorts? Give us some of your feedback, just.
Back on. Right now, for like online schooling, I think things are okay-ish. It's not like, is, online schooling, is it like, school start later for me in the high school, so that's a good thing. So, but with how like things are, sometimes like work get a little higher and then we spend more time doing schoolwork. And then, then like, yeah.
At least from everyone I've talked to, everyone just wants to be back like as soon as possible. And also like, I mean, school has been good. I mean, there have been some confusing parts, like for orchestra. We can't all play at the same time, obviously, and can't really play together. We tried one day and it sounded horrible. But yeah, and also I just wanted to add that I agree with Ms. Riddle that like, when you're bringing back in like students a week would seem very, very quick between sections. And yeah, I don't know, we all just, I think school has been good so far. I mean, at some parts, obviously it has been confusing, but for the most part, it's pretty organized and easy to navigate.
Did we lose Andrew?
Looks like it.
Okay. I'm going to go help him see if we can get-
All right, my apologies. I obviously hit the wrong button. Okay. Any other comments on this topic?
You're back.
I'm back. I'm not sure what I hit, but it wasn't the right button. So, the next item on the agenda, 5.04 focuses on our use of a financial advisor to facilitate our sale of bonds since past August. Since this was the first time the district has ever hired a financial advisor for bond sales, I ask that we take time to talk about the value-added piece of this, especially since the bond oversight committee had requested. We require such practice for all future bond sales by writing it in policy. Since Mark and I are the two members of this group who attend all bond oversight committee meetings, I will ask him to start the conversation by answering this question. What did the financial advisor do and how, how helpful was his support?
So, the financial advisor, basically he, I don't know if that echoes on my end.
Yeah, you sound fine.
Okay. He basically attended all of the meetings, all the pre-planning meetings. He, he got involved at the, at the early on stages with the Moody's Call, our rating call, the pre-pricing calls. He reviewed all of the documents that came from bond counsel and from our financial folks, weighed in on, on those. He actually attended the day of pricing and worked with the DA Davidson on the day that they were actually doing the pricing, which always requires a few little adjustments as the, kind of the day unfolds, as the, as the offers come in or don't on a particular bond, bond sales of years. So, he kind of, he was right alongside us throughout the whole, the whole process of the, of the sale.
And in terms of the process and outcome, you, you said he, he attended and was with you the whole way. I'm just curious if he impacted the sale price or brought anything to the table that resulted in a better deal for us? Or if it was more of a, you guys did a great job and you've done everything that I think you should have done?
Yeah. I think, you know, kind of the, the first half of that, you know, did he bring any great insight? Or, you know, come up with a great tactic or approach that saved us a whole bunch of money? Or some revelation, revelation that got us a, you know, better pricing? Or, you know, no, he didn't do anything that, that resulted in a, in a better outcome. I would say where the value was in his participation is he confirmed what we were doing was right. He confirmed that the pricing that DA Davidson was, was providing us with and all of the, the work that they had done was the best it could be. So, it was, it wasn't a, he wasn't generating a lot of, you know, better pricing. What he was doing was basically confirming that we were getting the best deal that we possibly could for the taxpayers in the district. That DA Davidson was doing what they were supposed to be doing and doing a good job on behalf. He was basically confirming the relationship that we've had for, you know, dozens of years with, with the folks at DA Davidson, that it was, you know, we were getting good advice and, and getting the best outcome for the, for the taxpayers.
Is that the same sort of confirmation we've gotten before from auditors?
Slightly different. Similar, but, but slightly different. It's, I mean, he's very narrow in his focus and was basically evaluating the, a little more judgment on the market conditions of the, of the, of the sale versus, you know, were there any improprieties or did we do anything incorrectly? Which is more what an auditor is looking at to make sure that, that things were done properly. Not necessarily that things are done as well as they could be done, if that makes sense.
Yeah. But the things like, so the auditor before has told us things were done properly. And he told us things were done very well and we got a really good sale. And a lot of that had to do with what is happening in the bond market at this time. So, he didn't really add any sort of thing that would have already been done.
And to the, to the actual pricing and sale of the bonds, no, he didn't. Right? It, it just, it, it, the, you know, value, when you talk about value, there's, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. So, depending on which way you look at, you know, I, if you ask me, I'd say, yeah, I mean, there was definitely some value there. Was it, was it a direct impact on the outcome? No. But, you know, the, the, yeah, go ahead.
I think the biggest value that I see, and I don't know if this is the truth though either, because I really haven't heard from too many in the public, but the public wanting to have that validation. I think adding that level to it and getting that, that this glowing letter that, you know, for those people that said, we need to have some validation that what they're doing is smart, I sure hope they read the letter. Because it said, yeah, it was great. It was perfect. Well, not perfect. It was great, wonderful. I don't know if we use the word perfect. Hopefully, they read it.
So, I, I guess at this point, the affirmation that we have done it, we, we, I'd love to be in on this, but that you and your team, Mark, have done a good job is important affirmation for us to be able to relate to the public. And would you say this is something that you think there's benefit enough that we should continue this process as we, you know, we're not going to sell bonds anytime soon, but the next time we, we go to market?
Well, we do have another bond sale.
I know, but just, just not soon. But I'm assuming it's not soon. I don't know when it is.
Well, another year, next year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant. It's out of ways.
I, I'm going to kick that right back to you because as the, I mean-
And I'll kick it back to you.
Yeah, as a, it, it's really an oversight function, right? So, as, as, as the board who's in charge of oversight and making sure that, that things are done, you know, as well as we could possibly do them, is that, is there value in that to you, right? So, the bond oversight committee, who, again, their job is oversight as well to make sure that we're doing, you know, what we're supposed to be doing with, with the public funds and the, and the capital projects. You know, they see some value in having, you know, kind of an independent third party saying, yeah, this is, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to. They're doing the, doing the right thing here. So, as the governing body of the district, do you see that same value as having somebody basically, you know, like Melinda put it, kind of auditing our process to make sure that, that we're doing the best we can for, for the public in terms of, of, you know, dollars?
Well, I certainly think that's an important piece that we can take back to the public. I mean, I, I hate to spend that kind of money in some regards, but what's that?
When you said that kind of money, how much was it?
About fifty, fifty-five hundred dollars.
But at the same time-
Paid that as a, as a part of a bond issuance cost. So, it was a, it was projected to pay that back as part of the-
And, and maybe we'll get some feedback from this discussion from, from the public. But certainly I think that adds a level of, of affirmation to our bond sales. I, I just am trying to weigh out the, the cost of doing this with the affirmation. And so, I'll open it up to the rest of the board to, to weigh in on that.
Again, I think the most value we can get out of it is if the public knows about it and what sort of feedback we get from them. And I think they should not only know that, you know, this letter was given to us and how glowing it was, but also it cost fifty-five hundred dollars and get that feedback. So, my question with the bond oversight dashboard that we have on the website is talking about the financial advisor and the results, is that on there now? Are we publicizing this?
The Oversight Committee has actually drafted a statement to put out that's under review right now.
And I'm sure it'll be part of their presentation to the board in the next month. I think it's next month that they're going to do a presentation for us. So, Leanne, Jesse, Kevin, thoughts?
I, I think that what's been said is correct. I mean, I think the value is, at least in my mind, is only an affirmation of the fact that we're already doing things well because we've got a good team, you know, managing not only in-house, but with our longstanding relationship with DA Davidson. So, if we, you know, we need to be publishing, we need to make this public if, if we're going to get the value. You know, given the other numbers that, that Linda showed us with declining enrollment and our tight budget, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars is kind of just a, a small amount. But at the same time, it's fifty-five hundred dollars, you know? So, I guess, I think if we're going to continue with this, we need to make sure that the public is hearing it and, you know, hopefully gain some confidence by doing it. Otherwise, I don't think it's worth it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I mean, Melinda and Kevin have said it mostly. I think it goes back to the bond oversight committee. They were the ones that asked for this. I think, again, those of us who've been on the board quite a while, trust in DA Davidson and the relationship we've had with them in the past and, and how our administrators do the work. The public doesn't necessarily see it that way. And the bond oversight committee is that in-between piece to help bridge that gap. And so, I'll be interested to see how the bond oversight committee spins this and and then, and then I'll have more of an opinion on whether we should do it again or not.
Fair enough. All right. Any other thoughts or comments to share?
I just, I just want to clarify for Kevin. It doesn't really come out of our budget. That goes right to taxpayers pay that money as part of the bond cost. So, it really needs to be something, I mean, we're as careful with every dollar of saving money for the taxpayers as we are with every dollar we spend here. But that's why people just need, you know, in the whole scheme of a million-dollar bond, it's probably not a huge amount. But we, we take every penny pretty seriously. And so, I'm, I'm with Mark. If, if it has value, if the oversight group believe it has value.
And I think as, as the board, part of our job is taking what that board oversight says and growing our, the public's trust of both the board and the admin. So, if that's worth it, that it's well-spent. If it's not, or if all they needed was just like a one peak with a financial advisor on this one bond and, okay, we're good, we trust you, then that's fine, too. Then we don't. But do they need, does the public need more of this?
And I think that's a question we can take back to the bond oversight committee and, and have further discussion with them. And like I said, I'm, I'm sure this will be part of their report out to us next month. Okay. So, the next item, 6.01, is the adoption of Resolution 22-2020, which deals with the possible suspension of some policies during the pandemic. This is a policy strongly recommended to us by WASDA. As you may remember, the board passed a similar policy at the beginning of the pandemic. This one essentially extends the sunset date. Dr. Quinn, do you want to add anything?
No, just, we took the policy that WASDA sent us. It's, it just authorizes me and my team that if, it just, it just confirms on your part that there are some things that we have written in policy that we just aren't doing right now. For instance, your policy says we have regular fire drills. We're not doing that right now. Your policy says that we, it's, it specifies the number of minutes of PE students are provided at elementary schools. That, that can't happen. It, you're, one of your governance policies says that will feature teacher and student work at board meetings. There's a number of these places where our current situation does not allow us to fulfill the policy. This, I think the reason WASDA recommended to you that you pass this is so that you're covered. If someone comes back and says, your policy says, and this says during the pandemic, it actually says in there that it, in, if you can't fulfill the policy in light of safety guidance from the Department of Health, the Department of Labor and Industries, or the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, that you can suspend those policies if they're in direct conflict with this guidance.
It's not that we're randomly throwing out-
Oh, no.
Prior to them. It's connected to OSPI and, and DOH and Labor and Industries.
Okay. So, unless there are questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 22-2020, authorizing the superintendent to temporarily suspend policies as necessary as attached here to and made a part of the minutes.
Does have a sunset date of December 31st, 2020, correct?
I think, yeah. Yes.
Well, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 22-2020, District Reopening Suspension of Policy as Attached Here To and May-
Oh, I'll move to adopt resolution number 22-2020, district reopening, suspension of policy as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to adopt resolution 2020-22-2020, authorizing the superintendent to temporarily suspend policies as necessary. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So the next series of items represent opportunities for sharing by the participants in the board, board meeting. So first group to share are our students. So I have Neet and Kong.
Hello, um, I think I have a question. So I might be confused. But when, if the school go back to like online and physical school, like both rotating schedule, teacher won't be back like fully, right? Teacher will still be on the computer online.
The teachers would be back for the in-person part of learning. It's very complicated at the high school. It's why we don't really have a good plan right now. But the teachers would have, would be back, most of the teachers, unless, you know, they had needed an accommodation, would be back. And what, what we've talked about is classes might be live streamed with some kids in the classroom and some learning remotely. Or, but yeah, teachers would be back when we get to that point.
Yeah, because I was talking to some friends and families. They were, they were also confused if, how that gonna work. And from the survey when they took in August, when they, when they were asked, like if they were, had to choose like online or in-person learning, like when, in November, when they get back, which one would they choose? Many who choose, like going to back in person, they thought that teacher would be back fully. However, if there are not, they might be switching out.
So it's easier to explain at the elementary level, Kong, the elementary level. Right now, teachers see their kids on screen, on the screen. And they do that for not all day, but parts of each day. If, when we get to a hybrid model, it means that kids would come in and have their teachers full-time for two days a week and probably be mostly online for the other three days a week. Because their teachers would be teaching the other half of the kids during that time. You know, and there'd be Wednesdays would be a day for all kinds of other things. So it would be similar, I think, at the high school where you would have two days a week where you would have contact with all of your teachers in person. But then the other three days, you will be back to learning in, online, using your online text, some of it asynchronous, possibly some. Does that make a little more sense?
Yeah.
Okay, because the teachers have to be there for the in-person.
Anything else to share? All right, board members.
Did Avneed, did you? I don't know if that. Sorry, Andrew.
Hello.
That's okay. I had it open.
Um, so obviously nothing much has been happening in school, really. I mean, like event-wise. Obviously, we just had our, a good chunk of school just happens. So I mean, that's great. Senior talk has started, obviously. Senior parent nights have been happening. Kind of scary. Also, I had a question about like, a lot of people were wondering, it might have been talked about before, but I'm not sure. So when in-person learning happens, when let's say students walk in, will there like be something to check, like their temperature or?
John?
Yeah, we are doing what are known as health attestations. When we started those attestations, which is a kind of a promise that you are, you're healthy. And it talks to temperature and other symptoms that might be typical with, with COVID. At this point, we are mostly transitioned to an online attestation where you get an email and then after the first day, you can get an email or a text and you do the same sort of thing using your, your computer or your phone. That data is then downloaded into Skyward and is accessible by the, the office staff at each school.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Would expect an email for each student they have, or would they get one email that covers?
It's each student, each student. Once, once you start doing it on your phone, I mean, our staff is all doing it now. They're, they're saying if they're coming in or not. It probably takes maybe 30 seconds to read through the choices and, and mark it once you've, once you've done it the first time. And the first time isn't, isn't difficult at all. It's probably a full minute or minute and a half. But after that, it's, it's very simple. And like with a high school student, it could be forwarded to the, the student. With younger kids, we ask that the parents do it.
Comes at four something in the morning. And I looked at it the other day at four something in the morning with my bleary eyes and answered the first question wrong. And I got a big red X that said, don't come in.
See how tackled at the door?
I, so yeah, so I had to explain myself when I got here. I put on my glasses this morning before I read it. It's very small.
That's one way to get a day off, Linda.
I came anyway. Yeah, but, but it's, but to get that Avneed, so it is, we're, we won't be taking temperatures. But we will be, right now, when I go into any building other than this one, I sign in. I say, you know, I've been cleared for today. There's hand sanitizer and I put my mask on.
All right, Kong and Avneed, anything else to share? Okay, I'll open it up to the board members then.
I just want to put a plug in for the WASDA regional meeting, which is happening Monday, the October 5th. Generally, we had one up here. Generally, you have to pay to go to a regional meeting and there's a meal and we're all together. It's virtual, the virtual, there is no cost for board members to attend. Avneed and Kong, you'd be welcome to attend. It goes from six to seven on Monday, October 5th. You should have gotten an email. You have to register for it. You have to go in and tell them you're coming and then you'll get a link sent to you so you can attend. The topic is leadership in the time of now, helping us figure out how to help our community in our district as we're going through all of this. There'll be some, some large group activities. They'll break us into some small groups virtually. And then after the hour, we'll have another half hour, 45 minutes as, as our own district. So there's three districts coming together for this district, one, two, and three. And then after the hour, our own district, which is the five counties, Watkins, Skagit, Island, San Juan, and Snohomish will come together and just do some more debriefing and talking and asking questions. And so that's Monday, the 5th. Register for that and attend. That would be fabulous.
Anyone else? All right, I will, Dr. Quinn?
No, I just wanted to bring up the fact that I'm hoping that we can schedule study sessions or ask you if you want to study, schedule study sessions in October and November. I know we have a lot of dates. There are a lot of dates that are taken with campaign meetings and levy information Zooms. But I did make a list of possible dates. I don't know what would be best if you want me to have, have those, send those out for you to, for you to look at.
Yeah, I think that would probably be best.
I will do that. I will do that tomorrow.
Okay. And the exec team, anything to share?
Yeah, I would like to, to share just a little array of hopefulness and this, you know, the tough times that people are going, going through right now. Last night, our executive team sat down, had a little something to eat, introduced themselves and learned a little bit about our, our new staff members. It's a very different time. We had eight where I think we had about 75 last year. But we, we did replace some people, some, some counselors, some, some specialized staff and a couple of math teachers. Were, were in the group. And then not next week, but the week after, we have 25 interns that all are doing their student teaching in Ferndale this year that would love to be those eight in a following year. And just the, the absolute clear hope and goodness that comes from, from these people who have joined and, and want to join the profession is, is just a super hopeful thing. I, I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Anyone else? Okay, the final items on the agenda are the consent agendas. The superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action, but requires the board's approval. The board's consent agenda consents, consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review both of these items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking action on them as a group rather than one at a time. These same items are also available for the public to review on board docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda as well as the board consent agenda as presented and made and attached to the minutes.
It has been moved to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. So we've now reached the end of the agenda for the September 29th regular business meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Thank you all for your participation. I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome. Good night.